Okay, the meeting is called back to order at 6:35 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason just as far.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second that the agenda of March 5th, 2024 be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Did you get a second?
Second. Oh, Aaliyah did. I didn't. I'm sorry, Aaliyah. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Can I have a motion in a second that, that the consent agenda be approved?
So moved.
Second.
I move to amend the agenda by removing items six and seven.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed?
That was the amendment.
Yes.
I think just for the, just for anybody watching, appreciate it. Oh, do you want, do you want me to?
Yeah, you can.
Just, those two issues that the board removed from the consent agenda are, are contracts with the community-based organizations at House UPK, they're actually, they should be on next board meeting agenda. So that's why you'll see those back again in some form next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no treasurer report.
We also just need a vote on just approving the agenda. Like we had a motion and second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion in a second? That, is that what you were saying?
Right, so we just voted on.
That we vote, okay. A motion in a second that we approve the amendment?
So moved.
We already did that.
Oh, the, the regular agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
We need the vote.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second that we approve the agenda? All right.
Let me just.
Mark and, I think, Aaliyah. All right, can I have a vote? All those in favor, all in favor and none opposed? Oh my goodness. Thank you.
Now I feel like I should oppose it just to.
Oppose my mumbling? You were talking about mumbling. Okay. All right, now I can say special reports.
Perfect. We do have two special reports this evening. Our first is Lisa Latton, who is the BOSI's board member representing Penfield, here to give us an annual report.
Can I actually use this microphone? Is this on? Or no? Do you have to turn it on? Hello?
That's on. There you go.
Very good. Okay, so I don't have this as a PowerPoint, so all of you should have the handout that I went around and put on your desk. And the clerk also has paper copies for the minutes, so we need to submit those. So typically I come here at least once a year, sometimes more than that, so I apologize that the year kind of got away from me. I like to come and talk about all the great things that are happening at BOSI's as they pertain to our students in Penfield. So tonight I just want to give a broad overview of the services that Penfield accesses for students in their district. So the first handout that we're going to start with is the services summary that starts with the CTE, the Career in Tech Education. So if you can just go to that. And I know when you initially look at this, at least when I do, there's a lot of information on here. And so what we tried to capture was what are our students in Penfield doing when they leave the building and go down the road to BOSI's? So the total enrollment of students accessing services at EMCC, which is the Eastern Monroe Career Center, is 70. And initially when I looked at this, I was like, oh, a lot of our students are, you know, 13 are in cosmetology. But quickly I realized that the breakdown, there isn't really like a clear definitive winner, so to speak, that students are really accessing all of those programs, which is what we want to see. Something near and dear to my heart, which is the multi-AC focus programs, which I presented about last year when I was here. And we have 13 of our students in those programs. And that is the small animal care and handling that happens at Lollipop Farm, which is a great program. They have the food preparation, the 20th century tech skills, the automotive trades, buildings and grounds. And have you all had a chance to do a tour yet of?
We have not done our BOSI's tour this year yet.
You really should. And just, I mean, I always like to brag about the programs. My son accessed those. I have friends whose children did. But it's really something to see kids in a non-traditional setting doing some of these skills in these work-based programs. So I would encourage you, if you haven't had an opportunity to go for a tour, I'd be happy to help set that up. Or you communicate directly with the clerk, Kathleen could probably help set that up with Val. But it's really worth your time and it is, you know, a fair amount of time to carve out a couple hours to go through and see all of those programs and what's happening, just to give you a better sense of those things that you're approving on your agenda and where those monies are going. So, pretty cool stuff. And something that was really interesting to me was that 13 Penfield Central School students earned 47 college credits via the dual enrollment with MCC or the GCC program, which is always great to hear. And of those, 12 of the 20 are the fastest-growing occupations. So, good data for people that like to look at data. And 98% of the EMCC students graduated. The back of that has the breakdown of the special education programs that Penfield students are accessing. And there are 42 students enrolled, and that's the breakdown of the programs from Creekside, Byrd Morgan, the East Art Program, O'Connor Academy, district-based, 811, 1211, Transition, and then our homeschool instruction. And then the further breakdown of IT services like occupational therapy, vision therapy, and physical therapy. The second handout is specific to the summer school that BOSI's has and the Penfield students access. So Pen, these are stats from 2022, 2023. So they had, you had 222 course enrollments in the regional summer school with a total of 1,857 student enrollments. And 46 students were enrolled in review classes. 106 exam registrations with a 51% pass rate based on that. Remedial courses, the pass rate was a 96%. These are all the regional programs and services that, with the check marks, are what, again, the students are accessing. So the takeaway from this is really to look at the breadth of services that BOSI's offers and what our students are choosing to do. So, that's a lot of information in a short amount of time. But did you have any questions specific for me or things that you want to know more about?
Board members, questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Catherine?
So I'm curious about the criminal justice. Is that, is that police department sheriff? Is that, what, what is it? Do you know? You might not know.
So what I understand the criminal justice program to be is that they partner with the Monroe County Sheriff.
That's kind of what I was thinking, but I wasn't sure.
And with MCC to offer that.
Okay.
Yes.
And we have five students in that?
Yeah. Dr. Putnam, do you know more information?
I think you did a great job.
But I mean, I could certainly direct you.
No, I agree with everything you said. That is where it is. Monroe County Sheriff partnership.
I could certainly direct you to Dr. Kathy Holber. She would have a better sense of that. Or Sherri Becker, to give you more specifics about that.
Yeah, I'm just, it's just a curiosity. I had my son, all those years ago, attended EMCC too.
Oh, wow, that's great.
For a program I don't see here, he was doing the radio program, and it was quite a while ago. So I don't know what it was called, but he learned how to DJ and, and do all that. He was on the air.
Maybe it was like a digital media arts?
I think it was before digital.
What's that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It was a while ago. But it really helped him in his career.
Yeah, of course.
And he's still to this day doing, he's in the music industry. So, I mean, when the kids find what, you know, when they find that little connection, or it's actually a very big connection, and then it's such a jumpstart either, I mean, there's some of these where they can go right out of high school.
Right.
Or it's a great foundation for the next step. So, yeah.
I think it's for the students that pick a non-traditional path, that this really shows how many of our students are accessing that.
Yeah.
And the importance of this.
Yeah, the importance.
And that it's successful.
Exactly. That's the thing. You know, that 98.8% of the EMCC, yeah, that's pretty, I'd say that's pretty good.
It's good data to have.
Yeah.
And it's, it's just nice to see the diversity of what's offered as well, and to know that our students are choosing that.
Yeah.
So, I just thought that was important for the board to know when you're approving all of these things, because sometimes it can seem, you know, a little bit up here, and this just kind of brings it down to specifics about what you're approving. Mark?
So can you explain, is, I'm not clear, is there a connection between this and like the programs that involve Monroe County Community College, like the, the associate's degree combination technical versus, and associate business? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Maybe the dual credit?
Yeah, can I, well, not the dual credit, but wasn't there, isn't there like the career, the technical program where they could start here and continue on to MCC and get kind of the trades and the associates? Am I just?
What was, were we just talking about? I remember that when we did the shop class and all that, when we were doing, that was back a while.
Maybe I'm just, I'm not remembering it properly, to explain it properly.
Where you get the associate's degree as well?
Yeah.
There were conversations around a tech school in the city that we did, talked about in terms of that, being able to graduate with a network tech associate's degree. But that, we'd never had any students attend. It's something I can think of.
Okay. So I, I must have been thinking something different. But again, thank you. I mean, you know, the nice thing about what you provide and what BOSI's provides is it's, you know, we can't be everything, as much as we like to, we can't manage with the resources we have, be everything to every, all students. But we, with this, and working with all, with all the other districts that are member districts, we were better able to do that.
100%. I agree with that, yes.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. So my son, I had, Penfield has a field trip to BOSI's.
Okay.
And I encouraged him to go. He's like, no, I don't want to go, I don't want to go. I'm like, could you just go? Just one time, listen to mom, you might actually like it. And he went, picked him up from practice, he jumps in the car, he's like, aren't you going to ask me how my day was? Okay, I always ask how his day is, he never initiates. I'm like, yeah buddy, how was your day? He was like, it was amazing, I cannot wait to go. He's like, it's all hands-on. I was like, oh, mom actually knew what she was talking about.
Right.
But he is so excited to start next year as a junior because he loves the social piece of school, but the sit-down, paper and pencil, that not, the traditional way is a little bit harder for him. He's very hands-on, so he's very much looking forward to doing something he loves and being very hands-on. So I'm very grateful for all the work you all do too, to make sure that our kids are getting what they need.
Yeah, I love it. It's a great group of people to collaborate and work with, and I think your son is the perfect example of why students choose that, right? And it's, we're so fortunate that it's available and the commute isn't bad. Any other questions? Okay. Fabulous.
Thanks for coming.
All right, I'm going to take this additional copy, Kathleen, but you have the last one. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a second special report from Mr. George English, our Director of Facilities. And I know that Mr. English has been excited for this presentation for 364 days, ever since he presented the last time. He's very excited. Thanks, Mr. English.
Absolutely. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you a quick update on facilities and how our facilities department's doing. Going to cover these topics tonight, just quickly go over our capital projects. I know you get a monthly update on that, but I'll give you some of my perspective. Discuss our budget and some of the challenges with that, our staffing and safety, and then I want to recognize a few of my folks, so. They're not my folks, I'm sorry. A few of my team members. So, capital project-wise, I, you know, a lot's going on. We've got a lot of exciting things happening at Jackson Road. We've had some challenges at Jackson Road, mainly with our RG&E connections and with the county. But despite those challenges, we are still very much believing that we're on time and on target with being able to move in the beginning of next year. So, I'd like to highlight our site contractor, DDS. They've been fantastic. And actually, most of the contractors have been great. I feel a little bad, especially for the plumbing contractors and electrical contractors, because they envisioned being able to do more work than they've been able to do this winter. But they're starting to get things rolling really good for them too now. So, all in all, that part of the project is looking very good. Phase 2A Scrivner Bay Trail roofs, we've got a good start on that in the fall, and then, and thankfully sealed up a decent amount of it. It's not perfect still. Some of that roof was pretty much a sieve. But fortunately, the contractor was able to repair a lot of the EDPM roofing, the rubber roofing that's already in place. And then that kind of got put on a pause because the color of the roofing that's going to be applied as our finish roofing material, the only thing that was UL rated was white. And that would have been completely unacceptable because a lot of that roof is seen from our classrooms. It would just blind you. Thankfully, now the darker colors are approved, so we're going to get a gray roof, and then our pathways will be a darker gray. So, good news on that front. Harris Hill is also part of 2A, and we've actually completed, the contractors completed some work over winter break, and that was HVAC work in our gym. And that work was done to try to reduce the noise in the gym. It was very difficult to instruct students because of the amount of noise that the HVAC units created. And thankfully, the extended ventilation piping that comes out into the gyms now has reduced, reduced that noise substantially. So, our engineers actually knew what they were doing, so. That was good. Yeah, you, people give you ideas, tell you, oh, this will fix that, this will fix that, and you're like, oh, well, I hope it does. And sure enough, it really did. So that was encouraging. And then we do have some more work that's going to be starting soon. We've had pre-bid walkthroughs for the high school, which includes our library we're sitting in, the commons, multipurpose field, some parking lot work. It also includes a pool deck replacement, because a lot of that tile is compromised. Potentially athletic storage building, we'll see how bids come back. But recent bids, similar to this, have been very encouraging. So I'm hopeful that this bid will come in very positive. We're getting bids, bids are due next Wednesday, the 13th of March. And I'm hoping that this will help our overall project and give us the funding we need to continue and do Phase 3, which Phase 3 right now is really in the design phase. And that's, includes switching the building I'm in now to the IT hub, which will be awesome for them. We've met this past week with our Bay Trail fax department. That needs a lot of upgrade, which that'll be fantastic. They're, they're so much fun to work with. You know, the teachers, they get so uptight, they're like, you know, it's their one chance. And Jen Lederhaus has been awesome to work with. She really cares, so that's, that's great. It also includes work on the Bay Trail serving lines, and then BCS items, Indian Landing, Harris Hill, Scrivner, and Cobble. So, a lot of that's just in the design phase right now. So, that's the update capital project-wise. Budget-wise, you know, if any of you buy groceries, you know what it's like. If you buy, have by any chance, you know, needed to paint any room at your house here recently, you were probably blown away. You know, you paid at least $50 a gallon for paint that you used to pay $30 a gallon for. Just as some examples. Yeah, we, we bought a couple of vehicles this year, and we budgeted $38,000. That's what they've been. That's what they've been for seven, eight years. We were able to buy a heavy-duty pickup truck with a plow, $38,000. This time around, $50,000. We also bought three vans, same thing. So we're, we're looking at a 24% increase per vehicle. That, that's, that's a little challenging and frustrating, but we're thankful that we are still able to get those things, and we're, we have what we need as far as equipment. Just another example, you know, throughout every district, seal coating is a very popular thing to do. It's viewed as a way to maintain our asphalt. Personally, I think it's a way to make it look pretty, and you're spending now 25 cents a square foot, it used to be 10 cents a square foot, to make it look pretty for a year, maybe two if you're lucky. And, and, you know, I mean, I do it at my house. I did my house last year because we had a huge celebration for my wife turning 50, and we had a lot of people coming, so yep, I'm out there putting seal coat on, so it makes it look pretty. After one winter, it's like, why did I bother doing that? And, and, you know, and for us, we, if we seal coat, then we have to re-stripe. And you know what paint costs? So not only am I paying now 25 cents a square foot to seal coat, just to make it look pretty, in my opinion. Now, there are people that will try to sell me hard on the value that really brings. Your asphalt still gets hard, it's still cracking, it's still failing. So we've, we experimented with a new item. It's called pavement dressing conditioner at Cobble's last summer. That cost 40 cents a square foot. So it is more expensive, but instead of having to do it every three years to make the parking lot look pretty, they tell me I only have to do it every five years. And it actually chemically treats the parking lot and keeps it flexible, keeps the pavement flexible so it won't crack, and the hope is that by it not cracking and getting hard, we can get maybe 20, 25 years out of the parking lot instead of more like 15 that we get now. So, I'm not, we're not the only district that's tried this. This has been a big topic with our facilities directors group. So anyways, it's just one example of some of the things we're trying to pursue and, and look at that will help increase the life of what our, you know, we're buying with our taxpayer dollars, so. And then we're all, another thing that we're doing, we are looking at all of our playgrounds and trying to, as much as possible, include more inclusive playground pieces of equipment. I'm working closely with Erica right now at Harris Hill on that. So, that, that's another focus area for us. Staffing-wise, this is awesome news. Best it's been since I've been here. We are currently only one vacancy within our maintenance department, only one vacancy with, in our custodial cleaner department. We, we do have one vacancy that we created for a head custodian, and we, we have a plan for that, that we have a person taking that test internally, that I'm hoping will be able to promote to that position once the results come out. There's a test next week, I think it is, very soon, and this person signed up for the, for that test. So anyways, three vacancies out of 71 positions now, that's fantastic. Less than 5%. So I got nothing.
So anybody watching at home right now, if they're interested in maintenance mechanics and cleaners, give George a call.
Or summer help.
Or summer house.
Yes. That's a problem. I have a, we, I, I went to the job fair for summer jobs for, at the high school last year, had 14 students that I was able to get, say they were a little bit interested. All right, fill out an application. No, nobody. So anyways, I'm sharing that because we have cleaning positions, we have grounds, you know, landscape positions, we're looking for help, and if you know any kids that are looking for a summer job, we'd love to employ them, so. All right, so this person here is amazing. Marie Brantis is one of the admin assistants in the facilities department. The last two months, she's been the only admin assistant in the facilities department because our other person was out with a surgery. She's one of the most loyal employees I've ever had the pleasure to work with. She's a joy every day. She's always cheerful, she never acts overwhelmed, even though I know at times I overwhelm her. I try hard not to, but it happens. But she's just a joy, and so I really appreciate her. And it, I'm sure anybody that has interacted with her within our district finds her to be nothing but a joy, and she's always happy, upbeat, so I really appreciate her support. And, you know, the last two months, she picked right up, she worked some overtime, I didn't even have to ask her, she just made sure things were covered. So, thank you very much to Marie, she's amazing. NeNe is a custodian at Bay Trail, and is actually the gentleman who is taking the test that I'm hopeful that will be able to promote to a head custodian position, so. But he does it, you know, another person, always positive. Anytime I ask, hey, NeNe, can you do this? Can you do that? He fills in overtime when it's needed, even at other buildings. So, just been, you know, just a person that's phenomenal to have on our team. And finally, Jim Cleveland. I've never really highlighted Jim to this group, but Jim is amazing. Jim is also the association president. Jim looks a little intimidating in this picture. And actually, Jim was very intimidating to me when I interviewed here. Jim is hard of hearing, and so he really concentrates during an interview process. And I thought, man, he hated me. But, but what a super guy. He is.
We might have told Jim to say that.
But Jim, you know, like I said, is the association president. He cares, you know, he's not the association president for Jim's sake. Jim's the association president for the group's sake, but also for the district's sake. And I, without a doubt, for the district's sake too. He, he cares about this district, like, he, he makes sure snow is taken care of, he just, but, you know, I put in his review, he's one of the best people I've ever had the pleasure to work with. No doubt about it. So, really appreciate Jim. So, all right, I'll stop rambling. Thank you for letting me present to you all. Do really appreciate the job here and the opportunity to work with Penfield folks. It's great. It's a great district. Any questions for me?
Board members, Mark?
Actually, I have a couple here. For the, for the transportation, the buildings, grounds.
Yes.
Are we getting any movement with RG&E as far as the connections?
We've made some movement, at least on the temporary power side.
Okay.
There is still major concern with the permanent power side making movement, but we have, you know, Dr. Putnam has been engaging with some of our local representation, and that's been helpful. I've engaged with my contacts, and that helped at least with the. I've engaged with my contacts and that helped at least with the temporary side. He's trying, he tells me, but it's, it's frustrating. It's frustrating for everybody. You know, RG&E is, it's a challenging organization to deal with right now, unfortunately.
Yep. And you mentioned some issues as far as county, with the county for that project.
So with the county, we, we ran into some issues with, you know, number one, they didn't want us to have three driveways. So we, that delayed some things with some negotiating with them around that. And then we had an employee that retired from the county and that, that caused some delays as well. And then we ran into issues with the water line and we wanted to have the sewer line be gravity fed across the road. But then that was going to hit the water line level. So the water line had to be lowered. And then public health had to get involved. So it was just one thing after another. You know, it's hard to point a finger at anybody and say, hey, they did a horrible thing and they, you know, it was their fault or their fault. It's just complicated. There's so much red tape. So really what.
And when you're talking about the purchases like the trucks and all, do we get state contracts, access to state contracts? Is that even, is that affecting the prices?
It is. But unfortunately, the state contract pricing is not what it once was. And, and you know, I'm hopeful that maybe we'll see that come back with, as supply increases. But right now, the supply is, the demand is just too high. You know, they're, they're, they're not hungry to sell you a truck. They, they, they got somebody else lined up that'll pay the 70,000 that it would cost. And we're paying 50. So they, they're not really anxious to, to sell it to us right now.
And then the last thing is, do we have any parts of the capital project that are with the state for state approval at this time?
No.
No.
As Mr. English mentioned, we received approval from the state for Phase 2B. So bids will be opening for that next week, as we mentioned. But Phase 3 has not been submitted to the state for review yet.
All right. Good. Thank you.
So, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Krista?
Oh, yeah. Yes, Krista, let me have it. Sorry.
I have a couple of questions, like, as the board knows, these acronyms drive me nuts. So could you tell me what Bay Trail FACs is?
Oh.
What is FACs?
Family and Consumer Science. So it's what I know as HOMEC.
Right. Home and Career. Got it. Okay. Thank you. And then what are the BCS items? Scribner?
Building Condition Survey. So every five years, our architects and engineers go through and do a building condition survey for us.
Okay.
And so they, you know, like at Cobles, they identified that in our D Wing, we have breakers that we're using for power switches, which, you know, that never made sense.
Okay.
So that's a BCS item that we're going to address in Phase 3 of the project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And George, I just have a quick comment. I really do enjoy your presentations and it's unfortunate they're only once a year. But you're, what I really do enjoy is that you love your job.
I do.
And you take care of your people. And I really appreciate how you appreciate your people. And I really would like to meet these folks because.
I'd like you to. Come, come over. Well, I'll.
Yeah, they don't let me out often, George, so I don't know how that's gonna be fun. But thank you so much. Thank you very, very much.
Well, I'm grateful for the people that we have working here because we have a lot of good people. Thank you very much.
A few more questions.
I just, I want, also would like to give you a compliment. I agree. I think it's very clear that relationships are really important to you. Without relationships, you don't have anything. And I think that's part of the reason why our, you have so many positions filled. People, I think, enjoy working for you. And then also, I would just like to compliment you on looking at how we can be more fiscally responsible because that's clearly one of our district priorities.
Yes.
And I love that you're looking at other ways to seal our parking lots that will hopefully save our taxpayers money down the road. So thank you for that.
And one other really cool thing that we've done. Jim Cleveland, you know, drives a lot of this, is we have a robot now. I was just talking to Katie about that earlier, that paints our fields. And it uses GPS. You know, it was an investment upfront, but when we first lay out fields, it's usually four man-hours, three people. Now we program a robot and those three people can be doing something else. There's somebody that kind of has to supervise. You don't have to stay there the whole time. But in about 20 minutes, that robot paints a field. It's incredible. So those are the, you know, just some of the things we're looking at to try to be more efficient. So.
I just have one question.
Yes. I know you guys want to go home too.
When is the Phase 2A gonna be done? The, oh, yeah, the vestibule at Harris Hill?
That's this summer.
Summer.
I apologize. Yes. I meant to highlight that. Yep. So that will, so there will be no summer school activities at Harris Hill this summer. So math and reading camp will be at Cobles and the extended school year programs will be at Cobles as well. So Harris Hill, the main entrance work will start as soon as we can in, in June and hopefully be done in early August. And we are doing nine more classrooms at Indian Landing this summer as well. But only two of those classrooms need abatement. And everybody promises me I won't be stressed like I was last summer.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, George. That concludes superintendent reports. Special reports. I mean, you know, George was here for hours. I'm confused. That concludes special reports. Thank you.
All right, Helen. Student rep report.
Lots of cool, awesome things that are happening all around the district and I'm so excited to tell you about them. Penfield Schools celebrated their amazing social workers during School Social Work Week. And middle school and high school students and Black Student Union loved reading to Scribner kids for Black History Month. And Saturday marks 100 days until graduation. At the high school, students wore bow ties to school last week in celebration of Mr. Menchel's last day. Many talented track athletes competed in states and had awesome performances. Key Club took a visit to St. Anne's to volunteer with the senior citizens. Four PHS juniors, including my best friend, won the Rotary, Oratorical, and Vocal contests. At the, I hope I can remember this acronym. Monroe County Schools Music Association All-County Jazz Concert. The Penfield students were recognized as some of the most talented jazz musicians in the district. And for the Monroe County Schools Music Association All-County Concert, which is different, that will take place on Saturday where even more students will represent Penfield in vocal orchestral and band ensembles. Participants in the February Break Europe trip had so much fun, especially when seeing famous landmarks like the Eiffel Tower and the Mona Lisa. And the World Languages Department kicked off their elementary language teaching program at Cobles two weeks ago. At Bay Trail, the hardworking students of Drama Club are gearing up for their performance of the SpongeBob musical Youth Edition this weekend. Tomorrow, students will celebrate Spread the Word Inclusion Day by being kind and inclusive. Next week, Craft Club will make beaded butterflies to celebrate the nearing arrival of spring. Thank goodness. And Fishing Club is also gearing up for spring and begun planning for their 2024 season today. Oh, it's over here. At Scribner, throughout the week, 4th grade classes will be taking field trips to Dayton's Corner School and participate in fun activities like a spelling bee, which I won mine in 4th grade. My biggest accomplishment. And next Thursday, 5th grade classes will visit Eastman Theater to learn about Rochester's rich musical history. At India Landing, the red and white student staff basketball game will be held at PHS this Friday. And registrations are open for the talent show next month. And at Harris Hill, talented young actors will put on their production of Annie Junior this weekend. So buy your tickets, everybody. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay. So we have just a couple of student staff honors, a couple of Penfield Central School District updates. And I'll turn to Dr. Driffl for some business updates. And as mentioned, our Scholar-Athlete Teams. Congratulations to all of our winner sports teams on being named Scholar-Athlete Teams for the season. In order to qualify for this honor, the team's average for 75% of the roster must be 90% or higher. This recognition includes the following teams. Boys and girls Alpine skiing, boys and girls bowling, boys and girls basketball, competitive cheerleading, ice hockey, boys and girls indoor track, boys and girls Nordic skiing, boys swimming, and boys and girls wrestling. So kudos to all of our students. It always just hits home that they are students, athletes. So students first. Mock Trial Team, congratulations to the PHS Mock Trial Team on winning their first competition of the season versus Brighton. That is the team, after their win, they're very excited. They were very excited because Penfield lost in the finals last year to Brighton. And this year, the very first meet, they beat Brighton. So they're very excited. But really a great club. It's been around for a while now and continues to grow. Not every school does this. It's only a handful in our county. But they really get a court case and they have to learn it inside and out. And they get to, they have to, they find out a couple of days before they go if they're going to be the prosecution or the defense. And so they've got attorneys, they've got witnesses. They have to learn everything on what they can and can't say. And then they have to follow all the legal procedures. And so you get points, not just on who wins, if you find the person guilty or not, but ultimately they get points for if they do everything correct in the, in the legal world. So we actually have an attorney that is, is a volunteer with the club as well as our teacher advisor. And it's really neat because the judges in mock trial are actually practicing attorneys, typically Monroe County prosecutors and defenders. And so very nice, but our kids were very, very excited. So congratulations to mock trial. And as mentioned by our amazing student rep, this week is National School Social Worker Week. And so just to thank you on behalf of the district, to all of our social workers for everything that you do and support students. We continue to hear both from the media and from the meetings we go to as district and the board, is the impact of, of life on our students. And much has changed and COVID certainly didn't help. But in terms of all of our mental health team, in terms of our counselors, our psychologists do an incredible job. This week, our focus is on our school social workers who also help all of our students in so many ways. So thank you very much to our school social workers. And just a couple of updates. As mentioned, the Bay Trail Drama Club is presenting SpongeBob Junior. It's a very deep philosophical musical. But the kids are very, very excited over at Bay Trail and that happens this weekend. I do know there are still some tickets available. And then the high schools is putting on a performance later this month for the Music Man. And so please come out and see our musicals, both at the high school and at Bay Trail. And then it is that time again. Our Penfield Education Foundation is a not-for-profit that supports our students and staff, our staff through grants, and our students through tens of thousands of dollars of scholarships for graduating seniors who apply. And so one of the, actually the only fundraiser the Penfield Education Foundation does every year at the moment is our 5K Race and Walk. It is, please go online to Penfield Education Foundation. I don't have the webpage there. If you Google it, it will pop up. But you can go ahead and sign up for the Race and Walk. If you're not interested in racing and walking, you can still sign up and get a T-shirt. You can also sign up to be a sponsor. And even better yet, if you know anybody, board members, district office, anybody in the audience or watching on TV, like who maybe owns a business and wants to sponsor, it's a great opportunity to do so and get your information out through the foundation. Again, you don't need to be a runner or walker. You just need to love education and we encourage folks to do that. And what's fun this year is all the sponsors, you can do all of that electronically. So you just go to the same page and instead of clicking Sign Up to Run, you click Sign Up to be a Sponsor and it's helpful. So that's where we are. And I think that's it for my updates.
Board members' questions, comments?
I just have one question for the walk. Isn't there a friendly competition between buildings?
There is a friendly competition of buildings. So we'll put that out as well. Yes. Yep. So it's a little friendly competition. I mean, it's so friendly that I'll like maybe publicly say district office won last year, but we passed that prize on to a building because that's where kids are. But yeah, it's a great opportunity to get out. It's hopefully, we'll have some nice weather. If not, we'll still get through and, and you know, if you don't, if you're not a runner but you want a T-shirt, you know, sign up or be a sponsor. My sales pitch is done. But it's a great opportunity to, to share money for students. And that foundation is always looking to add new scholarships. So there'll be four, I believe, new scholarships this year based on community members who came forward with different ideas, either memorial scholarships or honorary scholarships for people who have retired. And they, you know, they wanted, there's, there's the Mark Nelson Award. So that's being done by the Harris Hill PTA. But just again, a great opportunity to provide students with scholarship.
I did have one question about the, that race walk. Did you, you mentioned that the district office won last year?
Yeah.
Did you participate in that win?
Uh, yes. I, I signed up and I worked it. Yep. Did I walk?
Yeah.
No, I wore the shirt. Sometimes I drive a buggy.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I really want to run it, but like I have to be there to help out.
Right. And you have to give other people a chance. Right. And.
Those donuts that they bring in are not gonna eat themselves.
Yeah. Okay.
But I have, not only that, but we sign up the whole Putnam family. And typically, if it's raining, I'm the only one who shows up. But the money goes to a good cause. So that's what we care about.
Okay. All right. Just double checking, you know, that win.
And that's, so that's it. I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, board. Not a lot for me tonight, just two things. We'll review like a shorter update of our budget draft for next year just based on some changes over the last couple of weeks. And as Mr. English mentioned, we're excited to share that at our next meeting, we should have capital project bids, should everything go according to schedule. So we're, we're on target for the timeline with that and really excited to get started. We'll actually be getting started this year, this, this current school year. So be some construction happening here at PHS in the not-so-distant future. Budget development. So tonight, according to our calendar, we're looking at the second draft budget. Still looking at overall revenue projections with conversations with the state. You know, going through our appropriations analysis. This is the time of year where we're doing staffing analysis. There's annual evaluations of kids. Just today, we had two long meetings about personnel and staffing for next year. So the numbers that you're going to see tonight are going to change further. It's a dynamic process, but here's where we stand. So this is an abridged version of what we saw last time, the different functions or cost centers of the district. Not a lot of changes overall relative to where we were back in February. I think back in February, the overall budget increase was 1.92%. So you can see we're up to 2%, flat there, or a $2.3 million increase, bringing next year's budget currently to about $119.2 million. The big items that changed from February, it's great that I can piggyback off of Lisa's, Lisa Latin's presentation tonight. Some of those special programs contained in Function 22, those occupational education programs at EMCC that she was referencing. The current enrollment this year is 70 students. Next year, it's jumping up to, we think there's going to be more than 80, which is wonderful. The great programs, as she mentioned. But they are a little costly, a little spendy. And then that was really the big jump in this, this second draft budget. The full line item budgets in your packet tonight. We are going to double click kind of on that central services, number 16, to piggyback off of George English in a moment here. But kind of like the, long story short, not a lot of changes from last time. I do anticipate some more changes moving into our next meeting in March and our, when we adopt the budget in April. But that's where we stand for now. So I just want to unpack the facilities budget a little bit more closely. Starting with operations. So this is kind of like the, the building base team. So this is our. So this is kind of like the building-based team, so this is our cleaners, our custodians, the work that's actually happening in the buildings. As George mentioned, some of those service contracts are jumping up a little bit in costs. We are seeing an increase in utilities again, not as much as we saw last year with natural gas and electric, but still, you know, a 5.7% increase on utilities. And as he mentioned, just kind of the supply costs have gone up a bit. This year, that $235,000 number is going to be tough to stick to. So next year, we're anticipating, you know, more along $275,000 or a $40,000 increase. Maintenance is more of the upkeep of the buildings, so that's our grounds team, that's the maintenance mechanics, people that aren't assigned to a school building. As Mr. English alluded to, the equipment costs, so those are for increased costs to trucks and vans, increasing 27% for next year. Contractual repairs up a little bit, that goes in line with the extra costs that we're seeing on seal coating and things like that. I will give George kudos, because I really appreciate his fiscal sensibilities. He really has tried to hold the line on finances. Last couple of years, he's tried to bring me, you know, budget that he can control that's basically flat year over year. So when he came to me this year with a 5% budget increase, he was very nervous. Very, and you know, it is what it is. We want to, you know, invest in our buildings and make sure that our kids have a welcoming and affirming environment, a place that they want to come, they feel energized with. So while we're seeing some cost increases here, I do want to just publicly recognize that he really has gone out of his way to try to curtail costs as much as possible. And then the other item here that falls under the facilities budget is those central services, so that's the security of the plant and central storeroom. Central storeroom is paper for district office and things that go out in the community, more or less. So I do want to talk a little bit about next steps, kind of, we're sort of halfway home here in the budget development process. I know there's ongoing advocacy regarding the legislative budget. Next week, we should see the one-house budgets, so those are the budgets that are put out by the Assembly and the Senate, basically responding to the governor's proposal. I did see that Speaker of the Assembly Carl Hasty came out today and said that they were in favor of restoring the foundation aid to the full amount. He did say that they want to fund a study to look at foundation aid for the future, potential changes, but for this year, at least the Assembly is supporting. Coming back to full foundation aid, and I know Shelley Mayer, who's the Chair, she's the Chair of the Senate Education Committee, she's in favor of that as well. And then actually, just this afternoon, I saw that the State Budget Director Blake Washington, who works for Governor Hokel, had indicated that he kind of acknowledges that the foundation aid funding is probably going to be restored. So a lot of really good signs on state aid funding. We won't know for, you know, another couple of weeks, and I should say maybe longer, because we're starting to get some whispers that this might be a late budget season. So law says that we're supposed to have a budget by April 1st. Last year, it was late, I think it was a month late. So we'll see what happens this year, but that's starting to sound like it could be a reality. They have a lot of other issues that they're just not as aligned with, that are going to take some time to, I guess, flesh out further. At our next meeting, we will review the full BOSI's budget in detail. We submitted our initial request for services last week to BOSI's. And then we'll just, once again, kind of clarify where we are in terms of expenditures, in terms of available revenue, so that we can bring forward recommendations for what the school tax levy would be, and then the corresponding assigned fund balance. At the next meeting, we also need to approve the ballot proposition and the election officials for May 21st, so that we can get the legal notices going by the start of, I think it's April 1st this year is when we have to do it, it's 45 days prior to the school vote. And again, we will have those four propositions this year, the school operating budget. We're proposing buying school buses from the 2017 Capital Reserve, nine buses at a total cost of $1.3 million. As a reminder, it was five large buses, three mini buses, and one mini wheelchair-style bus for those nine. That 2017 Capital Reserve for buses is full, so there's no more money left in it, so we need authorization to create a new Capital Reserve, so it'll be the 2024 Capital Reserve for buses. We're proposing a 10-year life at a $35 million aggregate authorization. This amount with an inflationary factor, as we head towards that 2035 electric bus mandate, allows us to hopefully just use this one reserve over the next 10 years as we comply with the state mandate and electrify our fleet. And then the fourth proposition there is the school board election. There are three three-year terms available from 7/1/24 to 6/30/27, and anyone interested can now pick up a packet by contacting District Clerk Kathleen Zestrow. And I'll open it back up for discussion.
Board members' questions or comments? No? I don't have anything either.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you. Okay, so we are on, wow, 8A, Monroe County School Board Association's committee meetings. The first one is labor relations. Mark?
Yes, one second. We had the labor relations meeting that was, I think, just after the last board meeting. And this was the presentation on school safety plans and the Workplace Violence Prevention Act. And so they talked about some of the requirements of safety plans. None of that was really new. We do safety plans every year. There was not a lot of new information on that. I think it just reinforced that we're on track, is really what that did. Then they talked about the elements of that Violence Prevention Act. There's a lot of detail in there that was well-attended as well. There are a couple of key things, you know, there's timelines, like this January had to be, was effective. This February, we had a policy statement completed, which we did. And then March, coming up, March 19th, we have to have our program must be completed, in other words, program being developed and completed, and we have to be fully compliant by May 3rd. So you know, those are the timelines, and again, we've been working on that, and I'm comfortable that we'll be on track on that. That was, so that was the labor relations meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll share with you, just as an interesting update, is that because this is the workplace violence requirements have always been in place for all public employees in New York State, but now they've added schools to it. So we worked on policy. Erie Policy Service, that the board uses for policies, had a very long policy. We ended up going with Genesee Valley, which is another policy they shared that is, it's about one page. And then we're really glad, because the districts that went with Erie, Erie within a month has already completely redone their policy. And so that's why we went out with the one-page policy, knowing that this is new and we'll have to update as we go through. But it was just one of those wins that are, that are nice. So the districts that went with the shorter policy all were happy, because Erie, rightfully so, probably for legal reasons, but they completely revamped it. So now those districts are having to try to get policy back together and make those changes. So, but Dr. Kenny and Dr. Driffl have been very involved with this, and we'll be, we'll be ready to go.
Awesome. Okay, Legislative Committee? She didn't go. But she just said, do you want to just say?
They just were going to talk about, I wasn't able to go, but in their agenda, they said that they were going to talk about the Legislative Breakfast, which we talked about last time.
Yeah.
They were going to, you know, just give an update about that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any unfinished, Mark?
And we also had the trip to Albany yesterday.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
So we, I attended, I think we had 20 people from Monroe County School Board Association attend. We took the train this time, which was a nice change. It was, so it made it much more pleasant. But we went out there, broke up. I was the meeting facilitator for SED. I met with Christina Conklin, who is the Deputy Commissioner and the CFO for SED, as well as Alex, and I'm going to pronounce this, Tricolinos, who is the Office of Teacher, at the Office of Teacher and Leader Development. They were extremely generous with their time. We anticipated half an hour, we were over an hour in meeting with them, and quite a lot of detail. I could give you a lot of detail, but I think that, you know, there were some key things, such as the budget, which, and Dr. Driffl mentioned, in terms of, there's a lot of pessimism about it being on time this year. But one of the questions is, you know, what are their priorities? SED, like everyone else, has got labor shortages, and one of their priorities is getting their staffed up, so they can support the programs that they're trying to develop. We talked about the foundation aid formula, which is not, not the amount of funding, which, again, Dr. Driffl mentioned, was Hokel head-cut, but our representatives, again, they're dealing with their constituents, which is us, and you know, the legislator is really pushing to restore it. But the formula itself, and how they determine who gets how much, is what they're talking about doing a study on. And that's, you know, there's mixes on that. There's some districts that really need it, some that, you know, doesn't impact as much. Some people at the state are reluctant to do it, because it might tell them they need to spend more money to meet these needs. So, you know, some people have a hurry on it, like legislators mentioned it, some people aren't as much of a hurry. One thing that Ms. Conklin did mention is, you know, they're doing studies, and this doesn't affect us so much, but over the past 20 years, there's districts that have lost 40% of their enrollment, and many were all in southern-tier, north country, and they're barely, and they're, they're sort of living off of foundation age. They couldn't survive without it, and they're barely able to keep in place, you know, minimal programs, not the stuff that we offer. And so what do we do with those districts that are really small, very spread out, and how do we manage that? And they're, you know, they're trying to go through that. Then, we talked, we had a long conversation about the teacher shortage, and how we can address that, and what they're doing to address that. And this, this ties back to trying to help, help with the local universities to help, you know, to bring in more candidates, more, you know, do more education, as well as, you know, really driving, improving the enrollment in the school, in the, in the teacher programs for people of color. The other thing we talked about was out-of-state. And one of the things that they mentioned, because we hear about a lot of these states where, you know, they're not really, they're doing a lot of, let's say, not positive things to education, and these teachers might want to go somewhere, but then they look here, and it's hard to get in. I think we, I think if New York State may have, you know, helped, we could have, we could really address the shortage of teachers with qualified teachers who want to come to a state that appreciates them. And so what they're looking at, they said, New York State's one of the only states that has their own test, certification test. A lot of states use a kind of a common test, or a couple of common tests. And they're looking at making that, recognizing that as far as, and I won't say so they don't have to test in-house, but I think lowering the hurdles to be able to become certified in New York State. And they're, and they're looking at, talking about this, they may be making decisions as early as May and June on this. So, you know, they, they recognize, of course, they recognize, and they hear from everybody, and they understand that those are avenues that we're, we're not helping the way we are, and the way you can improve that. And then the, what was the other thing I wanted to mention was buses, buses. Everybody talks about buses, every meeting, discussions with buses. And really, what it comes down to is the electric buses, everyone knows the problem, nothing's going to, no one really expects anything to be done to address this mandate issue in the near future, but they all know it needs to be done. And what will happen is probably get to the end, and then there'll be a sudden rush of fixing it. But they know it needs to be fixed. They're working through it, they're, you know, they're trying to work their solutions and what they can do, you know, there's politics involved in all that stuff, because there's, we do want to go green. But everybody's aware of this, and we just have to keep doing what we do, and raising the awareness, and we've got to work on compliance, we've got to raise awareness. But this is just indicative of everything. They know where the problems are, because whether it be buses or anything else, school or not, we're school-related, because there's people advocate. The progress is slow, doesn't mean it's not happening, it just means it takes some time, and you just have to keep, keep pushing, keep pushing, that steady push will get it, get, get us where we want to go.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the main part.
Thank you, Mark. It looks like it was very productive.
Yeah. Could I ask you a question? Just if you know, when you were talking about the teacher shortage, if there was any conversation about this, just, from my perspective, it seems like one of the issues is the amount of education you need versus how much you're going to get paid at the end. So the amount of potential debt that you graduate with, and then what you're going to get paid. So I'm wondering if, if it was talked about how New York State is doing compared to the rest of the country, like, do we have loan forgiveness programs? Do we, do New York State teachers get paid more than a lot of other states? Because that just feels to me like that's the central problem. I don't know if that's true, but...
We didn't have a lot of, really discussions on comparative information, like you're talking about us compared to other states. And I have, so I can speak of my own opinion and all, but I, but really, that's not, we didn't talk about that. And we had, and we, you know, we pretty much had these set of questions, and, you know, I would just say, no, we didn't. But I'm sure that they are looking at things that they can do to encourage people to go into it, because they know, you know, what it takes to go in there, what it takes to get an education, to be qualified for a teacher, and what the teacher salaries are. And, you know, not every district's salaries have huge ranges from one district to another. I think they're, they're aware of that. But that's kind of where we were.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Questions or comments? Any other unfinished business? Any new business? All right. Can I have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at 7:42 PM? So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?